Wednesday, April twenty-third, school committee meeting. On February twelfth, two thousand twenty-two, Governor Baker signed into law an act extending the certain COVID nineteen measures adopted during the state of emergency. This includes an extension until July fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two, of the remote meeting provisions per Governor Baker's extension. The public will not be allowed to physically access the school committee meeting. This meeting will be conducted hybrid. Will you join me on the fudge of allegiance? Public comment. Comments can be emailed in advance of the six thirty P M. Start time to L ran at would you dot tech dot M A dot U S. All comments will be recorded to the record and all attempts will be made to mention them live during the meeting. Any emails received during the meeting will be mentioned at the following meeting. Is there any public comment? None being heard will move on. Approval of minutes.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Move the approval of March ninth twenty-two. Budget workshop mess.
Questions, comments? Roll call vote, Mr. Early.
Yes.
Mr. La Bella.
Yes.
Mr. James.
Yes.
Mr. Irving. Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Mr. Hablin.
Yes.
This true.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Dr. Testaverde. March ninth, minutes of the regular school committee meeting.
Move approval.
Second. Second. Questions or comments? Roll call vote, Mr. Early.
Yes.
Mr. La Bella.
Yes.
Mr. James.
Yes.
Mr. Irving.
Hi.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Mr. Hablin.
Yes.
This true.
Yes.
Mr. Connor.
Yes.
Dr. Testaverde. Treasuries report. To a motion to accept.
Move to accept.
Second.
Any questions or comments on Treasury report? Roll call vote, Mr. Early.
Yes.
Mr. La Bella.
Yes.
Mr. James.
Yes.
Mr. Irving.
Hi.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Mr. Hablin.
Yes.
This true.
Yes.
So Connor.
Yes.
Dr. Testaverde.
Yes.
Thank you. Old business. School committee self evaluation. We had twelve. Replies, responses, school committee self evaluation. Do we want to go through this page by page, or do you want to? Vote to approve? Does anybody have questions or comments on this? Mr. Bella.
I noticed on all the categories, they were very favorable.
Yes.
And but there was one category where on the new members received introductory training and orientations, there were a few that probably didn't get the training they needed. Can we correct that?
Absolutely. I think a lot of it, we have new members that with COVID.
Yeah.
Set things a little bit behind, but certainly, yes.
Because they still do.
M A S S, you're supposed to go through that program. So that's something again, well.
What was the name of that course?
Charting the course.
Charting the course. I think a lot of that had to do with the COVID the past couple of years.
For sure.
I think I recently saw too that they could have one in Danvers.
They usually spread them out in the course of the year.
Yeah.
The real segments.
Well, I think what was helpful too was in the fall, at the M A S S conference, they would have the charting the course and then have some things for new members. So we'll certainly catch people up for sure.
Yeah, I think some of the questions too that that might have had a lesson favorable might have been from maybe some of the newer people that just didn't understand that we had a, you know, a mission statement or this or that. So they didn't vote at that high. So I think we should receive it for the files and occasionally maybe prior to next year.
Yes, Mr. La Bella.
I was just wondering, I remember three or four years ago, what, there was an ethics course that all members had to take.
Every two years.
Every two years. But I think that's mandatory.
For teachers as well.
As well. Thank you.
So maybe we will hear something from M A S C about upcoming.
I will look into M A S S when the next charting.
Each one of their bulletins they send out, usually in the back, they have the next one or two scheduled events for training.
Anybody else? This true.
I just want to, Mr. Irving, I have not received that in a while, and I was just wondering, are you, you're still receiving it?
Yes, I received one the other day.
So I think I remember getting them at the meeting, but not actually having the mail to my home. Is that?
I'm not, do other members get, get the, I know they're talking about on, you know, day on the hill and so on, coming up, so.
I received one in the mail, but mine's still coming under my name, but as Penn Tucket, and I'm not serving on Penn Tucket. So I'm wondering if it's just going to like people that were previous chairs.
Perhaps.
Well, we'll get in touch with M A S S and find out what's going on, make sure every member gets, gets the bulletin.
In fact, I recently got two very quickly. I got one, I think, this week, and I got one maybe two weeks ago.
Yeah.
I thought, I thought they were going to totally disregard paper and, and we're going to be just getting them online now. Is anybody else under that impression?
That may be it. It might just be like they, that they're sending an email.
I don't receive anything via email.
Oh, okay.
What, what? I don't have a Penn Tucket email address anymore either.
Let Lisa and I take a look at that and call M A S S and find out what's going on.
Yeah, let's list the roster of the committee members.
Okay, thank you, Lisa, in your spare time.
I know, I don't know if we need to formally do it, but I'd move to receive this report for the files.
Second.
Yeah, I don't think, we don't need to vote on.
Oh, we don't have to, okay.
All right. Moving on. Reports of communication, student representative, Ryan Lynn.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Superintendent Lynch, and all other school committee members. Girls, the cross started off the season on a successful note, and that has continued so far into the season. Even though they don't have a senior on the team, their future does look pretty bright. Varsity softball team has its home opener. Or had its home opener this Monday against Lawrence High School. The team is made up of two seniors, seven sophomores, and four freshmen. They are motivated and working hard, and the Wildcats are very excited for the upcoming season. The varsity baseball team started off the spring season with a win over Greater Lawrence. The team lost their next two against two strong non-league teams in Amesbury and Georgetown. Team is young, but is working hard and looking forward to a successful season. Track and field team had their first home meet in over two years on the new track on April seventh against Greater Lowell. It was a challenging meet with Greater Lowell coming off a full indoor track season. However, there were several highlights in the meet from the Whittier teams. Soft, a sophomore broke the school's mile record and another sophomore elevated to become the second best triple jumper all time from Whittier. Sophomores won respective events in the hundred meter dash and the one-ten hurdles. The teams also had a strong showing for the boys' discus and girls' javelin throwers. They're looking forward to their next home meet on May fifth against Northeast. This week, they're off to Essex Tech, where their athletes will have their first opportunity to be timed on a laser timing system this season. I don't know what that is, but it sounds cool. Chess club continues to meet every Thursday. They're holding their second in-house chess tournament next. I'm going to guess that means next school, school week, considering next week's April vacation. This week, they're assisting the environmental club for Earth Day. The play that Drama Club held went well in March and April. Members are enjoying some current musical productions and sharing their opinions on them after viewing. The poetry club is preparing bags of poems to be handed out on Thursday, April twenty-eighth, as part of the National Put a Poem in Your Pocket Day. Bags of poems will be delivered to all English classes and shop areas with poems specifically related to the particular shop. Teachers will be asked to share the poems with their students. The poems are being printed on cardboard stock and are small enough to fit in a pocket. Environmental Club has planned an Earth Day trash cleanup. Just being held tomorrow. The Tower Garden and Poets in is set up and is currently growing mint, basil, lettuce, and Swiss chard. The club helped organize the carpentry department to make nesting boxes for eastern bluebirds and swallow tails for the Parker River Clean Water Association. And kids from Environmental Club have been invited to help clean up the blending turtles nesting sites along the Parker River on April twenty-third. Interact Club is sending out Easter cards to Baker Cats, the Oxford and Lakeview House in Haverhill. And they are planting a peace sunflower garden in May on Whittier Tech grounds. The location is to be determined. Journalism Club has been working in conjunction with Ms. Parsons on stories for the April edition of the Wildcats Magazine. Multicultural Club. Student leaders will give a presentation and lead discussion on bystander intervention and ways that can assist those who are experiencing harassment and bullying in their presence. Robotics Club students are learning to program in Arduino C and Python. Peer-to-peer club, they are helping interact club with the Easter cards. Key Club is about to finish Change Wars. That started on April first and it ends tomorrow. The class with the most points will win the money in their jar. The rest of the money will be donated to Save Pause Rescues in Grover. There will be a final report when the money raised is counted for the next month's school committee meeting. In addition, members have once again begun to go out and provide services in the community. This past Monday, they had a few members help serve at community meals here in Haverhill. The twenty-twenty yearbook is complete and has been sent to the printer. They expect delivery by May twenty-sixth and time for distribution to seniors before they graduate. The yearbook staff is now busy with photography for the twenty-twenty-three yearbook. Student photographers have been busy going to the shops and photographing juniors. They will soon be going to spring sports events, photographing junior athletes in action for use in the twenty-twenty-three book. Last but not least, art club continues to thrive. A few new members have joined and many of their regular members continue to enjoy working and socializing in their relaxed and creative environment. And that is all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Question.
A minute.
Yep.
Ryan, awesome job.
Thank you.
In your speech last week for the advisory board.
Yeah.
Very good job.
Any other questions for Ryan? Okay, moving on, superintendent's report, switch.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. Tonight before you, I have personnel hires for informational purposes for attendance makeup monitors. The evening school brochure for the fall twenty-twenty, spring coaches for the school year. I do have some resignations of a guidance officer and administrative assistant to the assistant principals. I have a, a few scholarship. I have one. One from the family of Jennifer Bell is donating twenty-five hundred dollars to benefit two graduating Whittier Tech high school students going on to secondary education from the D B C Graphic Shop.
Move the approval with gratitude.
Second, with gratitude.
Need a roll call vote for this, Mr. Early.
Yes.
Mr. La Bella.
Yes.
Mr. James.
Yes.
Mr. Irving.
Hi.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Mr. Hablin.
Yes.
This true.
Yes.
Miss O'Connor.
Yes.
Dr. Testaverde.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I also have another scholarship that was just given to us late, and I apologize, but it was a thousand dollars from graphics, Applied Graphics Inc. in Amesbury to be awarded to an exceptional student with financial need who will be pursuing post-secondary training, will continue their trade.
You're going to prove it. Thanks.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Early.
Yes.
Mr. La Bella.
Yes.
Mr. James.
Yes.
Mr. Irving.
Hi.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Mr. Hablin.
Yes.
This true.
Yes.
Miss O'Connor.
Yes.
Dr. Testaverde.
Yes.
So the public hearing on the F Y twenty-three budget was held earlier this evening, and, and our budget books will be distributed to our cities and towns this, this weekend. M C A S update on March twenty-second and twenty-third, the sophomores took their English M C A S exam. Woody will be running a math M C A S after-school program to prepare students for the math M C A S exam. Sophomores will be taking that exam on May seventeenth and eighteenth. On Wednesday, March sixteenth, I had an interview with Win from W H A V. This is a monthly spot we have on W H A V radio. It's a good opportunity to share the happenings of Whittier Tech and the success of our students. On Thursday, March seventeenth, I attended the remote M V R T A Whittier Tech Bus to discuss Whittier Tech helping out to build shelters. Bus shelters, Paul Moskovich, our vocational coordinator, along with Representative Andy Vargas was on the call. The meeting was to discuss if Whittier Tech can help build some bus shelters in the city of Haverhill, and that discussion is ongoing. On Wednesday, March twenty-third, I attended the remote Merrimack Valley Chamber of Commerce Board meeting. On March twenty-third, I attended the remote C C T E Working Group Spring Pilot Kickoff. We're in a pilot program with Dussie on how to do tiered reviews differently. So that's been quite the experience, and hopefully we'll learn and, and the process will, will be even smoother than it already is. On Thursday, March twenty-fourth, I attended the Massachusetts Police Chief Conference. I had the pleasure, along with Judy Clem Quitz from Massachusetts Youth Partnership, to give the Skid Kenny Award to Police Chief David Scott from Pepperell for his work in school safety. On Thursday, March thirty-first, I attended the remote building Women's Leadership Building Ally, Alley Ships with Women Leaders Conference. On Thursday, April seventh, Whittier Tech hosted the General Advisory Board, and we just thanked our friend here, Ryan Link, for his speech. I want to thank school committee members that attended. We had a great advisory board meeting with myself and some school committee members. I want to thank everyone that attended. It was a great night. And it's even better that our, our friend here, Ryan Link, was our speaker. He did an amazing job.
Thank you.
On April eleventh, we hosted a budget meeting with Groveland, West Newberry, Merrimack, and Amesbury town managers, along with Kara Cosmas. This is an opportunity for us to share information regarding our builder project and our budget for next year. And tomorrow, we will have another breakfast meeting. I feel like I'm going to spend a lot of time in the poets in the next few days. On Thursday, April twelfth, I attended the remote school building meeting. I want to congratulate Charlie La Bella for being the chairman of the school building committee. I also want to, to thank Brett Murphy and Dick Early for volunteering to help with choosing the architect for the M S B A. So we have a lot of reading to do. Field trips. Lisa's pointing to me. I have a few field trips I would like to seek approval. I have, because they're out of state, I have on May twenty-fifth our, our hospitality students and culinary students attending the Old Salt Restaurant in Lamy's Inn in Hampton. When we do them all at once.
Yeah.
Okay. And then on June first, I have students attending the Old Salt a different week in Lamy's Inn, in the tour of the inn and restaurants, a lesson on entrepreneurship, culinary arts, hospitality, and they'll have lunch. So that's exciting for them. And then I also have a for the auto tech program, the New England Dragway in Uping, New Hampshire, and they are planning on going on June third.
Last Friday. Who's who approved each one?
Mr. Early.
We had the proper paperwork.
We will have the proper paperwork before they head out.
All right, we'll motion.
We have motions.
Any more questions or comments?
I just.
Yes.
Um, I just wanted to know, um, so I understand the New England Dragway, that totally makes sense. It's like, you know, the kids are going to be, they're going to love it. The Lamy, so I was wondering, like, why this place in New Hampshire, when Haverhill has other restaurants, is it because you've kind of gone to all those places and now it's time to go someplace new?
I think they wanted to try a, a restaurant and hotel that are in the same building and that have a lot of tourism.
Yeah, and is independently owned versus a chain. Right, right. Got it. Thank you.
And where the else? Roll call vote. Yes. Early. Mr. La Bella.
Yes.
Mr. James.
Yeah.
Mr. Irving. Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Mr. Hablin.
Yes.
This true.
Yes.
Miss O'Connor.
Yes.
Dr. Testaverde.
Yes.
Anything else?
Admissions update. This is Morrison.
Admissions update, Director of Pupil Personnel, Christine Morrison.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the school committee and Superintendent Lynch. I have shared with you the April admissions report in, in your packet. For the class of two thousand twenty-six, we processed six hundred and ninety-eight applications compared to five hundred and sixty-two last year. This was an increase of a hundred and thirty-six applications. We were able to continue our in-person tours with our middle schools, and we were able to hold our annual open house for eighth grade students. Last year, we were not able to do our typical recruitment, and this year we saw a robust increase in applications. We are thankful to our middle schools who welcomed us back for in-person interviews again this year. And the guidance office did an outstanding job at processing nearly seven hundred applications. We were able to accept three hundred and sixty as students as of today, and, excuse me, and as of today, two hundred and sixty-two students have committed to attend Whittier Tech in the fall. So I have any questions?
Have you already been in touch with them? How do you know they've already committed?
So we have a process with our online system, and they were sent an email that they can respond directly to. So we've had that many.
So nobody has said no yet.
Very few. We've actually had eleven say no so far.
So eleven have said no.
Yeah.
Thank you.
When, how long do they have to respond?
They have till May first. We've asked them to respond by then.
Thank you. Mr. La Bella.
Yeah. First observation was that it seems to be a large jump from last year.
Yes.
Is that because of awareness or depending on the COVID?
I think there's probably a variety of different reasons. Partially maybe COVID.
Because I've been getting, not a lot, but several calls that my child is on the waiting list.
Yes.
And it seems because we've accepted more than the odds.
We, yes.
That we're, we're looking at that figure, correct if I'm wrong, that through our normal attrition, right? Will be down to where we are.
That's correct.
So basically, the people that are on the waitlist probably not much of an opportunity to come to.
That's, and we're not sure at this point.
We're not sure.
We're not sure, but it, you know, we don't typically have too many people say no over the last couple of years.
And, and just a question, I noticed that under the choice, we received sixty-five.
That's correct.
That's, but those are just.
They're just sitting, waiting to re, re-reviewed. We have our in district students around capacity with them. Yes.
Probably no chance for that.
No, no chance.
But that's just a little housekeeping. That's supposed to say April twenty-twenty-two.
Oh, yes. Nice job. That's why you're the math guy.
Oh, because I noticed, maybe this last year there was zero.
That's correct.
Because of COVID.
That's right.
Very, very interesting. So we're going to have to build another building.
That's why you're the chairman of the building committee.
Now, in this.
To work.
And told it, do you think this trend is going to continue?
I, I would say so. I think we're, or, or at least maintain. Yes.
I, I think. But I could say something. You know, Penn Tucket Middle School, they're building a brand-new middle high school, so you might see a decrease from Penn Tucket. But right now, vocational education, there's a real need for the workforce. So I think a lot of people are seeing that and seeing that maybe college isn't for every child. And if they receive a trade, then, you know, they can go right into the workforce with more training. I, I don't, I think it's, it's, it's not a fair thing to say that once you leave Whittier Tech, you don't have to receive any other training. I think you do need to receive more training, but you can go out into the workforce.
I may speak.
Yes.
My personal observation over the last three or four years based on the amount of students that graduate from Whittier, they actually have two degrees. They have the academic and then they have the vocational. And I noticed in some of the reports that the amount of students that have been going on to two-year and four-year credited colleges, institutions has gone up. So I think that, this is my opinion, that people start to realize a solid vocational, but I also getting a really solid, you know, academic, because, you know, we've been passing the M C A S at a hundred percent for the last four or five years. So it's kind of like, this is a bonus. I think years ago Dick would know, you know, he would. The academic from Whittier wasn't where it is today. So mostly, so now I think we're getting now, you know, students that realize that if they go into the C N A, the nursing that if they want to go on to college and become a registered nurse, they also have that C N A certificate or certification. So, you know, they've already in the field, and while they're going to school, there's a big opportunity for them to get a good job. So I, that's why I asked, Christine, I think this is, you know, even those things go slowly. You know, the pandemic kind of put the squash that, you know, we're kind of in a catch twenty-two here.
Well, I also think, and I agree with you, but I also think that so many people were home and trying to get repairs done at home, and it's on the realizing, and I'm sure. There's nobody to do it.
Right.
They're priced out for a year at least. So I think families are finally beginning to realize that. You know.
And, yeah, and to kind of, you know, get feedback on that, you know, as we tour the various disciplines, the location. It's, it's, you know, it's very high-tech now.
Yeah.
So when I go, and when I went to the electrical, you know, they were, they use the laptop computers and the circuitry. I don't know what's going on. You know, where before, you know, they would use the multi-me or whatever.
Right.
So the amount of training to go outside. So the amount of training to go outside, you know, to work in that environment, you just, you know, is, is the up. Especially down in the CAD room, you know, their robotics.
Christine, last year, how many, I don't know if you have this information, but how many freshmen did we end up with? At the beginning of school?
Sure.
I believe it was, that was what we accepted. I have that. But as far as that started the school year, is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Yes. I believe it was three hundred and thirty six, close to three forty.
Okay.
It was three forty three.
Three forty three.
Yeah, our October one report was three hundred and thirty freshman students.
That's the October report.
Mr. Early.
Is a question. Go ahead, Charlie. You're in charge.
Now, this is for the freshmen. Have we also received applications for, you know, sophomore, junior, senior?
We have for sophomores and juniors entering junior and senior. Yes, absolutely.
Mr. Early.
Currently, which the capacity of students here now? Roughly, I don't know the, what's the maximum capacity of students?
Really what we're at right now.
What is that?
Twelve, twelve sixty is really what we should. We shouldn't go.
We're in the building, we're in the building mode right now and what are we gonna do about another hundred and fifty above that approximately?
That's what we've agreed with, with MSBA.
But there's no way they'll let us go further, will they?
No.
I just want to really know that. Thank you.
Yeah.
Is MSBA aware of the number of applicants we get every year versus the seats we offer?
Yes, I actually tried with MSBA when we were in the beginning stages of this to set up a school so that we could accept every student that applied. And they told me no way. A lot of it is because the population of our district, school age population is going down. So many of the regional schools in our district have gone down significantly where our admissions numbers have gone up significantly. So
Okay.
it's a catch twenty two a little bit.
Mr.
Superintendent, I, I assume as we go forward, the building, we'll be looking at research from Merrimack Valley and also the state of Massachusetts, what jobs are in the, in the area? What the need is and therefore maybe sizes of classrooms or vocational square footage and so on. That will be going on, I assume, in the next couple of years.
That's ongoing now.
Yeah.
I mean.
But so we, we have a
Our advisory boards and those meetings.
We, we have heads up on what, what the needs are gonna be in the next ten or fifteen years.
Right.
Thank you. Mr. James.
I just again echo what Christine said. When you have almost seven hundred kids applying, the guidance staff interviews every single one of those kids. That is huge, a huge task, and they always do it so well. So please let the guidance staff know that we understand how good they are.
Thank you, Mr. James. I will.
They are fantastic, but I want to throw out a shout out to a couple of other people that did interviews. One, Mr. Bradley, our athletic director, and T. Roy, our community partnership person. Anyone else, Christine?
No, not for interviews. Oh, actually, I, yes, because we've added some of our equity and inclusion specialists to that piece, so that way we could have some Spanish speaking interpreters as well.
They helped.
Yes.
Thank you very much, Christine.
Thank you.
Principals report. Mr. Leganis.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Superintendent Lynch, the rest of the school committee members. I have some more positive news here. Just to recap, the winter sports awards night, we did have it and it was a success. We had a little different format, which worked very well. Each team gathered in individual places around the school and had their own little private get together. I just want to thank all the winter athletes, coaches and the booster club for, again, putting all their hard work and just a fabulous winter and it was nice to have that season go through. Spring sports, as you, as you can see, they're off and running and we are waiting for Mother Nature. It seems like Mother Nature's warming up to give us some warmer weather as the warm weather comes here. I'm looking forward to getting out to our beautiful sports fields and watching the games. Thanks to all the athletes and coaches for their time and effort and good luck this season. I just got a score here as we were walking in from the boys lacrosse. They beat Mystic Valley eleven to three in a beautiful night out here in that beautiful field. So I thank everybody. Congratulations goes out to all the students involved. If you were lucky enough to see the play Clue for, you know, practicing all those long hours. What a successful production. Thanks goes out to Sarah Anderson, Elaine Buker for coordinating the event. And to all the staff members and students that contribute to the play, especially Mr. Sandland's carpentry crew. So they made the backdrop and it was just a beautiful set. Also tomorrow, actually Thursday, March seventeenth, the Skills USA district qualifying test. We won forty-four total medals. And then tomorrow, April fourteenth, we have thirty-two students and four advisors going to Skills USA Leadership Event Championships in Marlborough. Is that correct, Mr. Lake?
Yes.
Awesome. So also, yeah, shout out goes out to Visery Boy, Superintendent Lynch talked about. We had two, just highlights the two hundred attendees, over two hundred on that Thursday night. Culinary, beautiful night. Ryan was a superstar with his, his speech. And also just amazing first in-person night in two years for that advisory. So it was, it was quite an event. And of course, the, the culinary knocked it out of the park as usual. Tomorrow, the Massachusetts Vocational Association and the Massachusetts Association of Vocational Administrators hosting event. And the Vocational Technical Student Awards Ceremony in Worcester. So I'm gonna head down there with a few guidance directors, the guidance director, a few other staff members, and we have Jade Banks. Jade Banks is from Havrell, Whittier, from, obviously from Whittier. And after graduation, Jade hopes to attend St. Ace's and to obtain her bachelor's degree in business administration. She's a marketing student. If anybody is wondering. Also, school safety. Again, Mother Nature's coming out. We don't forget school safety, so we're gonna continue the training. During the winter months, we try to keep everybody indoors with the training, but hopefully we can get some, you know, till the end of the year, get some more Alice training as we continue. Some senior event dates, just to pencil in, May thirty first, senior sign out in prom. So that's our prom night. And then June second is our graduation at seven o'clock. And all those stats, all the senior event stats are out on my written report online on our website, if you're interested. And still the last day of school is June sixteenth for students. So we're flying along here. So thank you.
Any questions from Mr. Leganis? Mr. Labella?
The new all purpose athletic field that made it through the winter.
It sure did.
And I, and but with the rain in the so far, I know at the beginning there, there was some issues with the drainage system that weren't properly, so.
Yeah, so, yeah, no issues, knock on wood. No issues up, up to date. That's absolutely stunning out there. And the drainage and, and it just seemed like whenever there was snow, it just melted beautifully. So so far, so good, knock on wood. Well, what a beautiful facility. Amazing. So we thank everybody involved, especially with the scoreboard and we're using that and it's just, it was, I, I looked at the lacrosse game coming in here. It was just a beautiful night. So we appreciate it.
Anybody else? Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Business manager, Kara Costas.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Superintendent Lynch, members of the committee. Couple of things for you. In your packet is the variance report. And believe it or not, we are more than three quarters of the way through the fiscal year. So the report that you have is from July through March. And at this point in time, we continue to be on track financially. And as we get closer to the end of the year, any differences in the balances of the budget accounts, as you know, as I've done in the past several years, I'll be bringing transfers to you to request movement so that we can align the accounts at year end. So I don't know if anybody has any questions on the report?
Mr. Labella?
Yeah. First, I want to say that this is one of my favorite reports. Give you something to do, so I don't have to watch Judy. And I think it's, everything seems to be aligned. I only have three quick questions. On page three, the general cleaning contract.
Yes.
But that's because of the extra.
Yes, that's because we added more day porters to keep things clean and we are planning to move some of that extra expense into the S R two grant. I believe Ms. Dr. Fay made an amendment and we'll be moving some of that over there.
So you anticipate it's continued to the end of the year?
I think, I think so. It's a discussion that we, we continually have with the superintendent and we feel that it has kept us here and kept us in good stead. So it's been money well spent.
Number two, I know that on the building improvements, there was zero in the budget.
Yep. That is a new intercom system that we have put in for safety reasons, obviously. So again, at the end of the year, when there are available balances and other accounts, I'll put it there. I wanted to identify it because it's really not a repair. It's an improvement and I really need to code it that way.
Then I noticed, just one more quickly, I know you have the answer, on page six. And the replacement of equipment. It was budget for about a hundred thousand. You're going to use eight. Are there plans to continue that?
We, we have, you know why that is low? Because last year we had additional funds at the end of the year because we were on a hybrid model. And so we purchased, pre-purchased a lot of the things that we would have bought this year. We bought before last year ended. So we'll look at that again if we have funds and if there are pieces of equipment that are due to be purchased next year, we'll take care of them at the end of this year if we can.
So you're confident?
Yes.
Move this money out now?
I'm confident, pretty confident that we're where we, we, we really addressed a lot of the five-year capital plan at the end of last year. Thank you.
Kara, when do we get the auditors? It's been a while.
The auditors will either come in person or, or present a report usually in May. They're finishing up. The holdup for the audit is because we are part of the Havrell, City of Havrell Retirement System, we have to wait until their review of their retirement system is done in order to assess the balance sheet amounts that we have to have on our balance sheet. So the audit was completed maybe a month or two ago, but we have to wait for that last component. So I expect that he'll have a report ready next month.
I thought it was around now.
Is this the last year their contract?
I, I honestly don't know. I'll have to look. I, I think we had an extension on it. I'm not sure.
Anyone else? Question? Thank you.
Okay, the last thing I'd like to tell you about is a fun event. As most of you know, or will learn, in two thousand and sixteen, we developed the Whittier Tech Educational Foundation. It is a five oh one C nonprofit. It is separate entity from the school. And it is a venue through which we raise funds in order to provide assistance to our students. Either at holiday times when they struggle with being able to buy tools or work boots. And we give, I think last year we gave nineteen scholarships through the foundation. And so this year we are having another Derby event. Last year we had one. It was all virtual, but this year we are able to do it in person. It's called Derby and Dessert. It will be at the Renaissance Golf Club on Derby Day from about five thirty to seven thirty. You have a chance to win five thousand dollars if you attend the event, but you do not have to attend. The desserts will be made by culinary. I've seen the listing of the desserts they're going to make. So if you thought this was wonderful tonight, you need to come and see what kind of desserts they're gonna prepare. We're gonna have a coffee bar. And it's a great night for people to get decked out in their finery. And so I have flyers here with me. If anybody would like one, you can purchase tickets by going online through our website and there's a link, direct link to the foundation. So I wanted to share that with you and I hope that maybe some of you might want to join us and get decked out in Derby attire. And that is all I have for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
May annual agenda items. Equipment of subcommittees. If anybody, can you get me a list of, you know, the list that we have? If anybody wants to move around or needs a spot, you know, if you can let me know before that, before the next meeting, that'd be great. The school calendar will be coming out. Superintendent's evaluation. And the new student representative to the school committee. You gonna introduce him, right?
Yes.
Okay. Him or her?
Yes.
Subcommittee reports. Executive, we have not met. I don't know. We don't need a meeting anytime soon. Instructional personnel, Dr. Testaverde.
We haven't met and I'm not aware of any need at this time.
Okay, thank you. Plan operations. Was there plan operations coming up, a meeting? Mail, okay. Salary negotiations, Mr. Early.
At this time, we do have some problems we have to talk about soon.
Right, and the administrative team has asked for us to negotiate, so we might want to set something up in May.
Right.
Do you want to set that date now or?
Sure.
It doesn't matter to me.
I'm just not sure about my calendar.
Okay, all right, we could, you can let us know. It's not a big deal. All right. Policy, Mr. Irving.
Mr. Chairman, we have not met, but we have scheduled a, a meeting in May. May eleventh at five forty-five. I'm just speaking to the superintendent earlier. We're not sure if there's gonna be that much of a need, so I'd like to put that off to six o'clock. And then we'll just do a quick update or election, or you can let us know what's going on.
Yeah, we have a plan operations at six.
At six?
Yeah.
Well, we'll leave it at five forty-five then.
Okay.
And let us know if there's anything, if you could send that out ahead of time, if there are any updates.
If not, we can just cancel.
All right, thank you.
So meeting dates, we get the regular school committee meeting at
May eleventh.
May eleventh at six thirty. We have the plant operations, May eleventh at six and policy at five forty-five. Is that right?
Correct.
Yeah. There is no new business posted. I need a motion to enter into an executive session to discuss strategy with respect to litigation. As an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the position of the committee and upon completion of the executive session will adjourn. So we need a roll call vote. No? Okay, we just need a motion.
Second.
Roll call. Mr. Early.
Yes.
Mr. Labella.
Yes.
Mr. James.
Yes.
Mr. Irving. Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Mr. Havlin.
Yes.
Mrs. Trope.
Yes.
Miss O'Connor.
Yes.
Dr. Testaverde.
Yes.